Activity between schools and parks and residential areas and commercial areas. And so there's a diagram and discussion in the document about that. Chapter nine is about our parks project, our parks, excuse me. And it also takes a deeper dive like the transportation chapter does into parks. We use the 2014 Parks and Master Plan as a starting point. And the consultant team updated the inventory, obviously with the input from Cory and his staff, and also took a look at future needs and updated some recommendations based upon what we heard about in the community. Chapter 10 is the last chapter, and it is effectively the roadmap of how you execute the goals that were identified. So there are implementation priorities, there are goal statements that relate back to those community principles. There's timeframes for completion, there's responsibility parties that are identified. And so there are various actions. That could be an action of updating the Palmer Park Master Plan. There could be an action about continuing to support school system. Continuing, one of our advisory committee members, they were reviewing the draft on healthcare. And so we ended up adding an action in here about making sure that we've got zoning the support of healthcare facilities. So there's a wide list of recommended actions, different timeframes. You can't do all of it at the same time. A number of them relate back to the zoning ordinance. And there can be things that we can do with zoning ordinance to further some of these goals. In terms of our next steps, we have a public open house that is scheduled for January 6th. That will be at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers, and there'll be further notification on that. Our comment period on this draft document goes through January 24th. And so we're having a public house, open house in January 6th just to help orient people who may not have heard about it, either a planning commissioner here or wherever. And it also provides them an opportunity to provide comment. And then, right now, we're anticipating going to the Planning Commission on February 20th. We'll see, you know, what kind of comments we get. And then possibly coming to the council in March. As you know, the Planning Commission is the entity interstate law that approves the comprehensive plan. However, city councils routinely will take an action to acknowledge it through a resolution. And so we would anticipate that we would do that step. And we'll just remain flexible. We'll see how the plan is received, the comments we get on it, and whether or not we make the February and March dates, we will see.
Can I ask a question real quick? Take a breath. I wondered if Samantha could do a video that we could share to get people involved and engaged as far as coming to the January 6th open house? I know it's kind of a bad time, Christmas is around the corner, but...
Well, I can't volunteer her for effort, but I will certainly talk with Mayor Samantha about that, yeah.
I'm not so sure about a video, but certainly, certainly publicizing the information and pushing out through social media and...
Yeah, so we do have, we did add something to the city's news feed on the comp plan. We'll be putting a second notice into the newspaper in the Madison Record. It'll be published on December 18th. We have notice published, we'll have notice published at Dublin, at the community center. We've got it up here in the lobby, we've got it down at the planning department. But certainly we'll work with Mayor's office to push things out.
I was gonna ask Terry if you could send a note out to your friends. Haven't come along.
I did get a text message from the city, from the city, asking to get confirmation of the knowledge. Awesome. I got a text message. Sorry. I'll get the plan and then make comments, so.
And we also, as part of the website, people could sign up to get alerts or information. And so once we put the document live, Allison went ahead and pushed that out. So everybody who'd signed up on the list served, got a message to say, hey, the draft document is available. So that concludes the presentation, and happy to answer any questions. Allison's available as well.
Do you think I could do a little deeper dive on the future place types?
Okay. The microphone off.
Just a tiny bit.
On or off? Yeah, very loud. Lot of sewage or something. Pull it, Terry.
All right. If you could just do a deeper dive into the future place types, where you really do see... I mean, people go to it, but somebody has a synergy. If you could just go into where you really do see the growth for the retail or the industry, where we'll get the biggest return on our development.
Okay, let me go back this... All right, so this is the future place type map compiled. And we'll talk about industry first of all, just because it's the smaller one. So the purple color represents an industry place type. And you can see that there is a large area of that on the east side of County Line Road. And a lot of that, well, it's agricultural fields now. But we would anticipate that that's where it would be. We currently have industrial zoning there, so we're certainly not recommending that go away. So in terms of significant industrial growth, that's where we would anticipate that.
Did they talk about which type of industry, what we should attract?
Which type of industry, what we should really be looking for, who should we be approaching?
So I'll say the short answer for this exercise is no in that it's not a detailed industrial analysis. However, the Industrial Development Board and the city did do an industrial study, it was pre-COVID, where they did look at the type of industry that the city wanted, and that's called the Industrial Area Plan.
Yeah, that was years ago. I just wonder if there are updates to it? Do they have new and different ideas?
So the consultant who did the market analysis took a look at all of our information with respect to industrial area plan, but they didn't go in and it wasn't... Comp plans don't do a specific targeted market analysis. We didn't pay for that, I guess I will say. And so if we want to, you know, update an industry study, then we would need to do that as a separate exercise. So I think the market information that we do have, look more broadly at. You know, there's certain sectors here with respective aerospace, automotive, warehousing, things like that. So very broad umbrella of what would make sense, given what's in the region, but they didn't do a specific industry study.
Okay, was the study done in the other things, the retail, or what types of businesses we should be attracting?
So the, they looked, I'll say broadly, in terms of the market analysis, looked broadly at restaurants, retail, and I'll say service businesses in general. But to identify specific, I'll say a specific restaurant or those kinds of things, that's not what we engage in. Comp plans don't typically get into that specificity. In terms of where we think the locations are, we have, the commercial there is kind of the darker red. And so you can see along Hughes Road, Madison Boulevard, Huntsville-Brownsperry, Highway 72, where we would expect to see commercial development in Town Madison. It's this darker brown and in some other areas because those are mixed-use development place types. And we would expect to see, as we see in Town Madison, a combination of retail restaurants and residential. So there's certain areas where we want to promote mixed use, such as Town Madison. Also, in the Village of Oakland Springs, we've got some mixed use. It's got a different place type just because of what's out there. So there aren't any areas that I'm thinking of that we're trying to introduce, I'll say, a new commercial place type that doesn't already exist in some way, right? So the areas that, for the most part, areas that are currently mixed use in some way, we want to build on those areas. And the, you would expect to see a combination of restaurants and service businesses and different types of commercial in them. But we didn't engage the consultant to do like a specific study for Town Madison or Village of Oakland Springs or that type of thing. But what they did look at is, if you've got X amount of population, they spend X amount of dollars on, whether it be groceries or what have you, that relates to a certain amount of square footage, and that it becomes your demand. And then we look at, okay, how are we, where can we accommodate that demand? Where can we fit, you know, X amount of square feet of industrial space or commercial space as we're figuring out place types?
I guess, you know, you guys have the same comment, but we have a lot of car washes here. Or we're looking at other things that are beyond, what are we looking at?
So the comp plan, yeah, the comp plan does not get into that level of detail. So comp plans typically are going to be looking more broadly, I'll say, at the place type, the land use. And then within that, you have your zoning code. And your zoning code, if you've got a convenience commercial type of use, which is what predominates, let's say in County Line or Highway 72, your zoning ordinance has then identified within that place type, what specific uses you can have. So if the city wanted to say, we don't want any more of a certain type of specific use, you do that exercise in your zoning ordinance, not in your comp plan. That's just kind of that hierarchy.
Right, but it's about, I must know what to do, right?
The comp plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the comp plan is identifying, you know, we think this area should be mixed-use development. We think this area should be single-family. This area should be, I'll say, more traditional convenience commercial, right? So very broad brush land use categories. And then, once you've established kind of that general field, right, for those land uses, then you go to your zoning ordinance and you say, within a convenience commercial, what specific uses do we want to have? And we have that in our zoning ordinance. And the expectation is, is once the city finishes this exercise, we'll go through and then take a look at the zoning ordinance and work on updating. In fact, we had been updating the zoning ordinance, and then we put that on hold when the council decided to update the comp plan. So the updated zoning ordinance is almost completed. But once we get through this, we're going to go back to the zoning, to draft zoning ordinance and see what we need to adjust based upon all of this feedback. And then that will come to the Planning Commission and the council. And that zoning ordinance is really the implementation tool for affecting change on the ground.
But we also have to be, we also have to be careful in that, you know, we're very much a property owners' rights state. And if somebody wants to put a, sorry, a car wash in an area and then a zone for a car wash, we have to be very careful in how we proceed. I wanted to actually ask you about a specific area on Brownsbury Road, right in the heart. Like you see the little red dot in the middle, if you move a little bit to the right, that's on Brownsbury Road just south of the community center. And I see you have it in green, which is Parks and Natural Area, which rules me because that backs up to my subdivision. It's actually zone R4, so, which is multi, like an apartment complex. It's a very odd-shaped, pie-shaped area. So how do we get to keep that green and not have it be R4? With a nod to our friends at the Planning Commission.
So the, that area might in fact be a different color, but with this scale of map, it can be hard to tell. It may look green.
Oh, it's bright green. I mean, it's...
Okay, yeah, I'm trying to see exactly. I know, I know the triangle that you're talking about. So I will say that there are some areas that, and that property is very heavily treated.
Yes.
And so there are some areas that we think shouldn't be developed, right? And whether or not, you know, the city acquires those properties at some point in time, so to not have it develop, or whether this map changes. So it is important to understand that, and the Planning Commission will know this because they act on the Westside Master Plan, is, you know, this is not a hard and fast plan. This is a guidance document right now. And something may come along that makes sense for the recommended place type to be different. There could be an economic development project. There could be a new type of housing. There, you know, there's a variety of circumstances that might need the Planning Commission to want to change this document. And so that said, when we were looking at place types, we did try to respect for the most part what's already on the ground, but there were some areas where they weren't developed, where we're like, well, we really think it should be something else.
Well, I just want to say I appreciate that, and I also appreciate that the Mill Creek Greenway is still on the plan.
Sure, of course.
That's a huge opportunity.
It is. It's a challenging one, but it's the project. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not disputing that. I'm just, but yes, you know, trying to improve connectivity is really important. But to get back to Councilmember Denton's graded area and what's in Madison, we don't have to keep those as rural transition. We could assign a development place type to them, but that's why they're there, is to kind of create that buffer. Some people might want more of a buffer. But, you know, to your point, Maura, you know, there are private property rights and you're, you know, to show everything as rural transitional is really kind of effectively affecting that. And so trying to strike that balance with being realistic about where growth might occur. I will add also that when we did the Westside Master Plan, based upon what Huntsville was thinking might happen up on Huntsville-Brownsperry Road, the Westside Master Plan showed some future place types up in that area as industrial. The development that's occurring up on Huntsville-Brownsperry isn't really conducive, we don't think, to industrial there. But, but that is, you know, a conversation, I suppose, of whether or not it makes sense to still show industrial there. When we've, when I've talked with different industries who are looking in the area, they're not interested in that location because it's too far from the interstate. And even though you can get over to 65, it doesn't quite make sense to them from an industrial standpoint. So that also played into, you know, we can show it as industrial, but is that ever going to happen? Does it make sense? And then basically, the commission and the council are going to be continually getting requests for change. And so if it's not industrial, you know, what would it make sense for it to be? And so we do have a combination of commercial and residential out that way, along with the rural transitional area. But, but that's something for you to look at as you're, you're looking at the document. Again, we're trying to strike that balance of what we thought really made sense, given input we get from industry looking, general site characteristics, the other uses around and so forth, so.
Out of curiosity, did the people, was the input strong for more residential? Or is the input stronger for us to continue to not go so much in that direction just because of the burn it puts on the schools?
Well, I mean, I think that there's always, you know, a sensitivity to the schools and supporting the schools. I think that we definitely received input about, well, let's put a lot of the development, residential development up in Cliff Farms. There was some comments about that, which is why, you know, Cliff Farms, even though some part of the city is shown on a lot of these maps, is because we had comments specific to that. And we wanted to make sure people understood we, we heard that.
And that was in the, in the presentation. We looked at it today where it was broken down. I'm sorry. It was in the presentation of exactly what people wanted, what areas they wanted to concentrate on.
Yeah, I, I think there were people who, a lot of people actually supported mixed-use development. They liked the idea of being able to walk to shops and restaurants and seeing different housing product type in the city. We had some people who, you know, didn't want to see any more growth, right? We got too much traffic, et cetera. I mean, that, you're always going to get something like that. But I don't, I don't know, Allison, do you want to chime in on that? I don't think that there was, that was the preponderance of comment. I mean, I think there was a recognition that there's going to continue to be housing. Where should that housing go? What should that housing look like? Certainly some interest in, I'll say, diversifying the housing portfolio. And we do have some action items in there to address that missing middle income housing and, and providing housing types for people in all walks of life.
Yeah.
One other question.
Allison's.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, Allison.
Oh, I would, I would concur with that statement. I think we, we heard, we heard on multiple fronts throughout the process that there is an interest within the community to age in place and that the housing stock and availability of, of those different types of housing options be perhaps a focus moving forward. So certainly the minting middle housing typologies were, were talked about with the stakeholders and, and members of the public that participate. I did read that.
Another question.
Redevelopment, did they suggest any place that we should look at, perhaps redeveloping what's there now? Because it really wasn't that useful or times have changed. Was there any of that discussion?
Madison Boulevard, hands down.
Okay, what can we do since those are already created and that sort of thing? What can we do as a city?
Well, I, so, and I, in fact, I just got an email about Madison Boulevard this week that I responded to. I get one about every six months. Again, that's kind of a level of specificity outside of the comp plan. However, there are a variety of things that cities do when they have, I'll say, older commercial development on a corridor like Madison Boulevard. You know, sometimes cities will acquire property and become a developer and issue an RFP so that they can control the destiny of that. There are jurisdictions in the state of Alabama that do that, right? Madison's really not in a position to do that, I don't think, given other needs. Sometimes if you've got a development partner who comes along and they're interested, you can incentivize development by rezoning property. Right now, Madison Boulevard is all zone commercial development. If it were rezoned for mixed use, where you could do residential and commercial, you could maybe get a developer interested, but that's a really sensitive subject. We feel right now, right, we've got enough apartments. We don't really want to encourage any more apartments, but that's the land use. If you were looking at a mixed-use development and residential, that's the land use that would go on Madison Boulevard. I fielded a number of questions when, you know, people were looking at the market of whether we would support residential on Madison Boulevard, and the answer was no, because, you know, that's just not what we're going to be doing. So there's different tools you can use to try and incentivize development. One of the challenges with Madison Boulevard is many of the properties have very long-term leases. And so that locks up property and it makes it difficult for others to acquire property. The other reality for Madison Boulevard that I've talked with people about is Town Madison, which is going well. But, you know, I think until Town Madison is largely built out, Madison Boulevard isn't as attractive. On the one hand, it might be a lower price point, but you don't have raw land for the most part that you can develop on Madison Boulevard. So it can be expensive to acquire an existing building, tear it down and so forth. So I think you've got that working against Madison Boulevard, and you've got everything going on in Town Madison Boulevard and frankly up in Cliff Farms and Highway 72. And so retailers are going to take that path of last resistance. Restaurants are going to do the same. And they're going to try and locate in those places rather than try and redevelop. When you look at what's happened on Madison Boulevard in the last five years, the new projects have all been on raw land. We have Aldi's under construction and two other commercial buildings. Where Bojangles and Dr. Rivera's dermatology was, that was all raw land. Where Fairfield is under construction, that was raw land. Right off of that, where Extended Stay Hotel got built, that was raw land. So there's not a lot of raw land left on Madison Boulevard. And so for somebody to come in and really do a project, they're happy to acquire. Now, we do have, you know, some existing buildings where people are slowly investing in them, right? The building next to Burger King recently got acquired, and they did a facade remodel and they're doing the inside. The old hotel on the south side is slowly being done. So the private market gets there, it just gets there at a much slower pace than sometimes citizens would like. And so unless the city comes in and, and offers money or rezoning, you just have to be patient and watch the private market do its thing.
So incentivizing is an option if we just thought...
Well, we did an incentive project, we did an incentive project for the Aldi project, right? They're, they're doing public infrastructure, which the city is supporting in terms of improving that traffic signal and providing turn lanes. That is an incentive that helps that project to go forward. So there, there are ways to do things, but when you really look at the land available on Madison Boulevard, the opportunities, you know, for the city to come in with public infrastructure are very limited. And so then you're looking at other ways the city can help, which usually is going to, you know, be through zoning. Sometimes it's sales tax rebates. But we, you know, we're very judicious with those types of things.
I think a perfect example is when Publix went into the Kroger. You know, that, that was redeveloped, and then Kroger went on to, on to fresh land. What was the term used? Raw land?
Raw land.
So that's an example.
I mean, I think that there, you know, when you look at the amount of private investment that has occurred, you know, in the last 10 years because the economy's been really strong, it's very significant. But there's still a lot of areas that, you know, need to be improved, where there may be disinvestment. You know, people always, you know, talk about that one corner at Madison Boulevard in Sullivan. And, you know, and that was acquired. We thought something was going to happen, and then, you know, the, the land was sold. So there's just certain things. Unless we control the land, we, you know, we have to rely on property owners to be motivated to do projects.
Renee, you have some questions.
Yeah, I've got a couple of timing questions first. I bet this might. With respect to the public open house on January 6th, did you have a time in mind?
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM?
It'll go from about 6 till 7:30. It'll be here in this room. We'll do a very brief presentation, and the bulk is really going to be an opportunity for people to provide comments or ask questions at workstations.
Okay, and then you mentioned zoning and that we had already done significant work, but then we put it on pause. So if we were to meet the March date to approve the comprehensive, how long after that would it take to have the zoning done?
You know, I haven't dusted off the zoning ordinance to look and see, you know, given where we are with the comp plan, what changes would be needed. It's possible, you know, we could have it in hearings in July, have it with Planning Commission. However, we haven't yet, you know, worked through that draft document with our Planning Commission. So I kind of have a process in mind of what we would be doing with our Planning Commission to work through those updates. And then, of course, next year's an election year. And so, you know, general rule of thumb is you don't try to get some major piece of something done if people are running for office. So, so I, I think I hadn't sat down to really, you know, figure out what that timeline would be because I need to see how this is going to play out. And so it's possible, you know, we could do the zoning ordinance before the new council takes office, but we need to be respectful of new people coming in and running for office. And, and so I think that's going to require some more consideration of, of what the timing would be for that.
Isn't the zoning done by the Planning Commission? Isn't the zoning done by the planning commission?
It's done by the city council. The planning commission will make a recommendation. But we'll spend, I'll say, you know, a good bit of time with our planning commission, you know, on changes and making sure, because they're the ones who typically are going to see the actions once the zoning ordinance is adopted, right? They act on site plans and plots and so forth.
So they do the bulk of the work and then the city council votes on it?
Yeah.
So you could have the planning commission go out and do the work and then the new city council vote on it?
Could do that, yeah. Yeah, there's lots of different ways to get to it. We just want to be respectful of, you know, people who will be involved in acting on the document.
I'm curious, as we were doing this, the, let's see, the best way to say this, the demographics of the people that came to provide input, did we collect any of that data, the folks that were willing to supply? The amount we're getting at is like...
Are we, do we have a good cross-section of the community?
Well, do we have a good cross-section, regardless of what cross-section we had?
Mm-hmm, is it representative?
Yeah, well, regardless of whether it's a representative or not, what cross-section actually came? And what's predominant there?
Well, I know on the online survey, we had 400 responses. I think that there were some questions at the end of the survey about like, what zip code do you live in? Allison can chime in here. And I don't know if they've kind of tallied all of the responses, but I know that survey. Allison, do you want to weigh in on that question?
Yeah, I'm pulling up the survey raw data. But I believe we did ask at the end some basic demographic questions. The zip code or where you live, your age, your gender, to get a cross-section or at least have an understanding of kind of the age group that was responding so that we could verify whether we were only hearing from, you know, the older members of the community or only hearing from the young folks. You know, as an example, one of the workshops was very heavily attended by our Madison youth, which offered some different viewpoints in the matter. So I can pull that up. It's also in the appendix, I believe it's the appendix.
The appendix was very helpful and very interesting. You got to see a little bit of public comment, so that was very interesting.
Yeah, I think we had, you know, just from the open houses that we had and the workshops, you know, we did have a good mix of, I'll say, age. People who were retired, people working, youth, as Allison mentioned. I don't know off the top of my head on the survey data, but I just know the number. And then we did the mapping exercise, but I don't think people provided their demographic information on the mapping exercise.
Okay. There was one data point I was curious about. Now, that sounds great, but, and it is good. I want to say "but" because everything else, right? Where'd they come from before here, right? So...
Oh, you mean people who may be transplanted?
Yeah, like, in my mind, right, mixed, mixed use. People with my accent do not necessarily go, yeah, I want mixed use. Because we never, like, mixed use is like, I can play in my backyard and I can wash my clothes in the backyard. That's mixed use. So not, hey, I got apartments on the top and I got commercial on the bottom.
Yeah.
So understanding where people are coming from, right? And understand like, what's important to them, right? Where are you being?
Well, I think that's an interesting question. And I think one of the questions did ask, how long have you lived in the community? And so that would kind of get at that. And obviously, you know, there's some transancy, right? Because of contractors and so forth. But, you know, you may have somebody who relocates here from another area, but you want them to stay, right? And so providing that mix of housing. You know, Providence is an area, not in Madison, obviously, but there's horizontal mixed use, right? Town Madison has a lot of horizontal mixed use, predominantly horizontal mixed use. You've got, you know, Taco Lamas and Mo's and the residential is nearby. People like being able to get out of those units, whether it's a single-family home or own apartment and walking to the restaurant. So it doesn't necessarily mean you're living on top of a restaurant. You could just have convenient walking distance. And, you know, a lot of communities in Madison is no different. You know, develop very Uklidian zoning where you've got residential over here and commercially over here and you can't conveniently get there. And so what we heard is people want to be able to get out and walk, you know? And it's people who maybe have lived here a long time. And you guys hear that too. Improve our greenways, improve our sidewalks because people want that connectivity. Mixed use is concentrated connectivity. But you can improve connectivity where you've got those disparate uses, where you've got your single family over here and your commercials as long as you've got a sidewalk and a greenway. So as this place type mapping shows, there's not a whole lot of mixed use that's recommended, right? It's predominant single-family. Madison isn't going to change in that regard. And so it's, but there are these areas where mixed use would be of interest. Because it provides different price points. It provides, you know, people in different stages of their lives, right? Different opportunities for housing. They may live in an apartment, then move to a house, then move to a patio home when, you know, they're an empty nester before they need, you know, more care. And so how do you provide that variety of housing so people can age in place, meaning place of Madison, right? So they can stay in the community and be with their friends and family.
I'll just say, I spent a fair amount of time looking at it and the document is dense. I mean, it's very dense. But I would encourage you to look at the appendixes or appendices, however you say it, because that really provides a lot of critical information where we've taken the response that people have given us and put it in that data form. So it has the pie, not pie charts, but bar charts. Bar charts of, you know, I've lived here less than a year, one to five years. The majority of the people that I can remember responding have lived here over 20 years. So they're invested in the community and that provide, I mean, this is really good and it helps kind of give you that over picture. But I was really impressed with the appendix. It just, there was a lot of great information there. I would start with that and then work your way to this. Because it's just very dense. And that's probably not the right word, but it's...
I'm sure you mean it in a positive...
Oh, it's positively dense.
It's concentrated.
That would be data rich.
Yeah, very data, yeah, yeah.
Concentrated information.
All right. Do you guys have any other questions? So I'm very interested in not just, so this is great. And being able to kind of relook at this and how, you know, how do we take what we had before, right? And this is mapped into that. Now, okay, let's get to work. And let's figure out how do we, you know, what low-hanging fruit, for lack of better terms, can we go attack? Can we go to whom? What kind, what kind of things can we, can we put in place now? I mean, I realize the election's coming up. But, you know, what kind of things can we get after and go put in place for the citizens now? How do we go about funding that? We have a very limited funding stream right now. And we're contemplating limiting that even further, which can have long-lasting implications, so.
Yeah, and this, you know, it has recommended transportation projects, recommended park projects. And, you know, council, every year you're adopting a budget, right? And you're always faced with a longer list of projects than we have funding for. That's not probably ever going to change. And, you know, this is just a moment in time of these are the projects that, you know, make sense or are needed. These plans typically get updated every, you know, 10 to 20 years, depending upon the amount of growth. And at a different point in time, there's going to be a different list of projects and a different host of challenges. So this is a jumping off point, you know, for you to kind of figure out, what do we want to tackle and, you know?
And maybe we can have a work session in February after we've heard from everybody. Like, I've already thought of two things that I'd like to address. Short-term rentals slash Airbnb's, VRBOs, that market for various reasons. And two, our fire department is doing things that are maybe above and beyond what they need to be doing, like servicing areas outside of our city limits. So those were two things. So I think once we have that public open house and we get some feedback, then maybe we could have a work session and find out, hey, what's important to you? What do you see an issue? What do you see as an issue?
And the short-term rental is one of the items for the zoning ordinance update.
That would be great, thank you.
Yeah, and, yeah, I mean, where I'm thinking more globally from the standpoint of, I mean, I get, let's address our priorities. I look at the city of Madison, it's more than just, I mean, like, the city of Madison is one entity. We have the schools, we have Madison Utilities, we have other interested parties, other stakeholders that we need to bring to the table. And we need to go, hey, this is what we're thinking. How does this affect you? How, you know, how do we work this together?
Well, and, but to reiterate, the schools were on the advisory committee. The Madison Utilities were on the advisory committee. There were specific stakeholder groups for them. So it's not that they've not been invited to be engaged in this process.
I don't want to imply that at all. I'm more thinking of the, okay, while the advisory committees were advising, now we're the executing committees.
Sure.
How can we, how can we, as the executing members...
That sounds so shameful.
How do you get executed? Yeah, I mean, how do we, you know, as the members that can actually put some dollars behind things and go do stuff, how do we, as a, for lack of better terms, family, establish our priorities across the family? You know, brother and sister might not all get everything they want. Yeah, most mom and dad know that we don't get what we want either. So have that conversation is kind of where I think we need to get to.
Well, in Chapter 7, where it assesses the fiscal implications and where we prefer to go based on how much money we're going to bring in, seems like a really good starting spot, right? What is going to be our development dollars? What is going to bring in the most income to the citizens in tax ways? I don't know what you have instead. You didn't, you didn't list anything in this, you know, what y'all have actually pinpointed as our expanding potential.
This is just a presentation that we, this is not everything that's on the website.
If she could expand on that so the people could hear, I mean, that's all, I mean, that's all. If not, you know...
I think we could, this was really helpful to overview for us to dive deeper and read.
Right.
It is available online. I do wonder if I might, if it'd be possible to at least borrow your book, your printout?
No, I was going to ask, some people prefer hard copies. And if you would like a hard copy, we're happy to provide you with a hard copy. You just need to let me know if that's how you preferred the document.
I would, I would.
Okay. Yes, yes, we'll print them in color.
Perhaps in color.
I'll pay for it.
Some of it doesn't have to be in color.
Well, it's fine. We'll provide them to you in color and get you binders. And we'll get those to you by, I'll say, what's today, Wednesday? We'll say Monday.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, we can certainly do that. And I'm using my, mine's highlighted in terms of changes we made in response to the advisory committee, right? So that I'm kind of keeping, just a running, a working document, if you will, so that I kind of know what happened to the document and why.
And the appendix information will be in there too?
Yeah, so the one appendix that I do not have in mind is the existing conditions appendix because so much of what's in Chapter 3 is a recache of that.
Right.
So that would be the one thing that I don't think you guys really would want. But I can use the, I can kill the tree branch if you need me to.
Well, no, it's the one that has all the information and the feedback.
Yeah, that's a different.
Yeah, that's the one I would love to have in writing for notes.
Yeah, okay. Well, maybe we'll give you all of the appendices except for the existing conditions report.
Okay.
And then if you decide you really need that one, let me know. But again, Chapter 3 is almost the entire existing conditions report.
It can be your Christmas present to us.
Okey-dokey. All right. I don't write though. Okay, yeah, happy to do that.
Awesome.
Sure. Well, thanks for being interested and asking us to talk about this and...
Thank you for all the work.
And then I will get with Allison and talk about dividing Chapter 6 into two parts as we talked about before the meeting, see if that would be more...
Thank you, Allison.
Yeah, no, thank you, thank you, Mary Beth, for putting all this together. Allison, thank you so much. I'm sorry you couldn't make it tonight, but I do appreciate you dialing in and helping out and doing all this work. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you all for your help.
All right, cool. I think that, and then there was, I don't think generic, any other topics that need to be brought up? I'm assuming none?
Motion to adjourn?
Uh, so moved.
Did you have some, no, oh, okay.
Yeah, we're adjourned, that's it.